Good evening, everyone. It's 7:00. We're going to get started. For those of you that are able, please rise while we pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for coming. As a brief introduction to the Zoning Board of Appeals, I want to welcome you to the Township Board of Appeals meeting as February 11, 2025. As a brief introduction, the Zoning Board of Appeals is a seven-member quasi-body appointed by the Bloomfield Township Board of Trustees per the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act. Matters pending before the Zoning Board of Appeals are decided on a case-by-case basis. Any appeal of a decision made by the Zoning Board of Appeals is subject to Circuit Court review. Each case will be called separately in the order shown on tonight's agenda. There will be an opportunity for public comment at one point during each case. All persons wishing to comment will be asked to provide their name and address at the podium. Address your comments to the board and not the applicant or other members of the public. Given the number of appeals tonight, please make your comments brief. Comments made by neighborhood associations will be considered as part of the factual information presented to the board, but is not the determining factor for the approval or denial. Please confine comments to the specific requests before the board. For a request to be successful, an affirmative vote at least four members present is required. So we hope this provides a better understanding of what you can expect at tonight's meeting. So may we take attendance?
So noted.
All right. And may I have a motion to approve or discuss the minutes?
So moved.
Have a motion to support? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. So tonight, I just also want to inform anyone that we do have two postponed items tonight. We have for 3115 Franklin Road, which is number two, is postponed, as well as number four at 1065 Green Tree. So if anyone's here for that tonight, that will be postponed. Yes. Green Tree. 1065 Green Tree. Okay. So we will get started. So the first item up is item number one, 7403 Lindenmere Drive. Is the applicant here? Good evening. How are you?
My name is Bruce Lazar. I'm attorney with Cousins Lansky in Farmington Hills, and I'm here on behalf of the applicant. This is a matter, as you indicated, that had been adjourned from a previous date. I believe it was December 10, 2024. There were a lot of, there's a lot of input from the board with respect to the original plan, and my client took that seriously and has made some substantial changes. The original concept was to have a wall in excess of nine feet tall. We've dropped that by more than two feet. And the purpose, and the reason of the height is if one looks at the photo, the top of the wall ties into the top of the wall of the side entrance garage. So it's consistent and provides a clean line. In addition, if you'll notice, the steelwork, which was originally going to be in white, is now a dark color, consistent with the home, and also fades into the background much more than the original bright white. Same thing with the pivot doors. They have been reduced not only in height, but they are now going to be a dark color, as you can see, in, which is also consistent with the current residents. So those were principal comments from the board to make this less noticeable, and my client has endeavored to comply with those suggestions. If you have any questions, please.
I'm going to ask one. I apologize. I was not here when this was first heard, so you may have to answer some questions, or at least
Sure.
answer my questions, even though they may have already been. I'm trying to understand the practical difficulty.
The practical difficulty is there's a patio that this wall obscures. Because of the nature of the lot, the, it falls off. There's large trees in the back, and then it falls off into a valley to the river. So there's not a lot of them. You can't go deep with the patio. So they had to get the adequate patio. They had to make it long and relatively narrow, which takes it into the side yard. The patio in the side yard is not a problem. The roof line has been approved because it's attached to the home. That's an addition. That's not also an issue. The only issue was the architectural fence, as I guess determined under the ordinance, was too high. It was the wrong height. So if we follow the ordinance, it would be four feet. That wouldn't give you any privacy whatsoever. And it would also, I think, be less, certainly less valuable to the residents because they want to, you know, they don't want to have their patio exposed to the street. And I don't think that the street, and your people traversing the street necessarily want to be looking in at their patio. So what we've done is we've tried to, because of the dimensions and the topography of the lot, we've had to extend the patio out into the side yard.
Is it going to be possible to mitigate the appearance of a seven-foot-high wall of steel with evergreen screening?
Well, A, it's not all steel. The doors are steel. The wall is concrete.
Okay.
And no, because this is the end of their driveway.
That's what I was
And so you can't put any additional screening. Now, if you notice, on the west side, there's substantial screening, both from natural trees and additional plantings. So, and this is quite a distance from the roadway. It's like 90 feet from the roadway. So it, with the colors they've now selected, it's going to be relatively unobtrusive. Originally, they had red doors.
I have no more questions.
I have a question. What is the color of the wall? Is it going to be white?
No. It's a natural concrete, and it'll darken up over time.
Okay. So that picture's not really representative of
It's not representative because, as I said, as it ages, there'll be a patina, and it'll darken up.
Any other questions from the board?
Public comment?
I'm going to open for a public comment. Would anyone like to speak to this item? Please step up to the podium and state your name and address, please.
My name is Ken Yeastings. I'm speaking on behalf of my wife Jean and myself. We live at 7419 Lindenmere Drive, which is the house immediately to the west of the house that's being discussed.
They have a copy of all that in their package.
Yeah, but I'm doing it in different order. And I want to make some comments from there. We also own the lot immediately behind the property that's being discussed. This is the original proposal, and as the gentleman mentioned, they had red gates and very gray-looking eye beams. To us, it looked like a carport because it's at the end of a driveway. The gates are wide enough, and the patio's high enough, you could put almost any vehicle in there. And a ramp has been built from the driveway up into the patio. After we got notice of this meeting, they came out and constructed the covered patio. This is the view from the road. Again, those are eye beams, very large eye beams. And they look very industrial because they're just a gray primer on them. Moving up the driveway, you can see how large this structure is and how inconsistent and not harmonious with the neighborhood or even the house that it is attached to. This is the view from our front sidewalk. I don't have a picture here, but there are two bedrooms, second-story-high bedrooms facing that neighbor, and one of them I've converted to an office. And I look at that structure, and I can see almost everything going on because Michael Schoen cut off all the lower branches of the hemlocks that were along the property line. And I think they just showed this drawing a minute ago. We appreciate the fact that the, it appears that the pergola is now going to be painted a brown consistent with the house. It'll make it look a little less industrial and it'll blend in somewhat. I'm not sure, and the gates have been painted brown. I'm still not sure why the walls can't be painted, too. But it still looks like a carport to us because you've got gates at the end of a driveway that are the same height as the garage door. We've had other people say it looks like a school under construction. I don't know if any of you driven by the old Walnut Lake School across from Ace Hardware. It's being converted to a, I think, a Callian Center. They were using the same kind of beams, but they're going to cover the beams. They're going to be inside, not visible. We've had people say, one of our neighbors said it looked like an Amazon warehouse under construction. We recently had one guess that it looks like a gasoline station, you know, the high ports that you drive under to fill up your car. So anyway, we appreciate the fact that they're looking at changing the colors, make it a little less obvious, but it still looks like a carport, no matter how you shape it up.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Richard Coleman, C.O.L.M.A.N. My address is 4861 Kew Court. I represent the neighborhood organization Meadow Lake Farms Number One. I don't live next door to the aforementioned house. However, the structure itself is totally out of character with the neighborhood, which is very wooded. It is a metal gate, I believe, not a wall, a metal gate that opens, I believe. And if it's that wide, does it open out? Does it open in? To me, it looks like an industrial yard on Grossbeck Highway. The structures above the garage, the industrial beams, just do not fit. I assume, because it's a metal gate, and structures like that are mandated to have greenery 12 months of the year, they will have to erect or plant greenery to block that view. After all, we have to do the same with the small generator. The view that you see is from the street. Mr. Yeastings' office is right there. It's a terrible thing to feign privacy when your entire side wall is visible to the neighbor. A seven-foot-high wall, metal gate, is just not suitable for our area. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak to this matter? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing. And applicant, if you'd like to address any of those comments or questions?
Yes, I would. I understand the comments for the neighbor, but that is, the structure, the roof, and the eye beams are not before the board. That was approved. There's a permit issued. That's why they've been constructed. With respect to the architectural fence and the gate, you can't see it from, because he's on the side, he won't be able to see that, and it really won't make any difference from his, seeing it from his office. His complaint appears to be the structure itself, which is in addition to the house. So with respect to the neighborhood, if you've been there, it's a very eclectic neighborhood with respect to design. You have older ranches. You have colonials. You have more modern structures. You have concrete walls on the structures. You have, one had red doors, I believe, which we were told wasn't adequate. So this is only this seven-foot architectural fence and the doors. And the reason the doors are there is because you have to be able to get maintenance vehicles into the back for landscaping, for repairs, and things like that. There's no room on either side because one side is all trees now and plantings, and the other side, there's not enough room. So the only way you can, you know, maintain your property
Excuse me real quick, ma'am?
Ma'am.
Ma'am, can you do me a favor? We're trying to, so we've asked several times. Can you please be respectful of everybody's? Thank you. Can you go ahead? Thank you.
So the only way you can maintain the property in the back is to have access, and it has to be through some means where they can drive, you know, lawn mowers or there's a septic tank back there, so if they have to replace a septic tank, they have to be able to get back there. You can't get in from the other direction because it's in the valley and there's the river. So that's the only real access point. So that's why they're there. And they're pivot doors, and they're rarely going to be open. They're only going to be open if and when they have to do, you know, some sort of landscaping or landscape maintenance back there. So, and being brown, just like the residential structure, together with the beams being brown, it all ties in together. And I, you know, the fact that they don't like the structure itself, well, it was, it's allowable, and it was approved, and we're only asking for the wall.
Bruce, can you tell me how far out the back of the house does it go before it drops off? Like, how much of a backyard do you actually have out there?
This is the architect.
Jeremy Griffiths, Expressive Architecture. The new patio sticks out about 14 feet.
Uh huh.
It's probably an additional 30 feet beyond that before it drops, and it drops down 80 feet.
It drops.
Literally. Yeah, it's quite a huge, and there's a lot of large trees back there already.
As you can see, there's a cutout in the open part of the patio because there's a huge tree there. So they want to maintain the natural setting.
Where, where's the septic feed? The issue of the septic tank has piqued my interest. Where is the septic field on this property? I'm guessing it's
Top left, back left corner of the house.
Fair. Okay.
Well, the septic tank's right up. It's the rectangle next to the two trees right, yeah.
That's the rectangle. So the field, the field's actually off to the back.
I don't know where the field is. It's, I'm going to assume it has to go right because it drops off the hill. I don't know. We're not redesigning the septic field today. But the point is, you can't, you can't drive equipment around the left side of the house. And the owner's planted extensive new landscaping to screen the entire west property line. We can't control if you get up in the air 25 or 30 feet in a tall house next to this ranch house to look down at it.
What's, what's the, you said the width of the patio is about 14 feet. What's the length of it across the back?
Well, yeah, 14 feet north-south. I'd say the lighter concrete hatch with the, with the curve cut out of it is about 70 feet across. And that's where the extent of the renovation work has taken place. The homeowner has made the back of the house very modern. The front of the house was existing. He wanted to give a small glimpse of the architectural changes on this addition. But I'd say it's about 70 feet by, you know, you lose about, I don't know, 70 feet by 12 feet. You lose the big circle in the middle. And then the covered portion is only on the western side of the, what was already a recessed corner of the house there. So the width that you can ever view this is if you stop and block his driveway, or you're walking and you're looking straight to the south. As you approach from the east or the west, this is totally screened by the house or all the trees. Or if you, you know, trespass and walk up the driveway and take photos, you can, you can, you can see the structure pretty well. But it's a, it's a narrow circular driveway. I'd say the driveway is maybe 12 feet wide. And there's huge trees in the front yard, side yard, rear yard.
So, so here's my dilemma. You've got 70 feet of patio across the back of the house before you get to this. At least that's my understanding from what's been said. 70 feet's not chump change. 14 feet deep, that's not great. And my guess is that tile field is probably in that space, just off to it. However... While I understand the need to get equipment back there, because servicing a septic tank is something that does require equipment to be able to get back there, generally a truck, which makes sense to me as to why there's a width there. What I'm not enamored with is the notion of this needing to come out past the house.
It doesn't, you mean on the side yard?
Yes.
Hang on a second, Bruce. I think what's getting lost here is what you see now, the structure that's up there, that can remain. That's going to stay. That's not before us. The only question is whether we're letting him put the fence around with the gate.
Right.
So I, you know, so that, that area is already there. That structure's going to stick up in the air. Whatever we do tonight.
Thanks.
Does that make a difference to you?
It does. Thank you for being back.
Ma'am, I'm sure I have a question.
Sure.
So, could we put back up the image of what is being proposed here? The, just the, okay, so I'm seeing the gate, and then I'm seeing something that's kind of like whitish, grayish.
The concrete wall.
It's a concrete wall. Is there any way that that concrete wall could be the same color as the gate? Is there a reason why it couldn't be?
Simple answer, yes. Longer answer, this is a very long, very dark, very nondescript house currently. We wanted some difference of material. We've already made the concession of matching the house. And I brought the actual paint sample. We matched the house. I brought some, as of Friday, construction photos. It might be a little easier to understand. I don't know if it's confusing or not, but you can see the actual color of concrete next to the current structure. Now, this is, as of Friday, primer gray structural steel from the factory. But you can see, maybe this is a better... You can see that even just painted primer gray, and the, the color of the house is, I don't know if it'll do it justice, but it's a very dark brown. This already totally fades into the shadows as you're standing 90 feet away at the street. And if you get a little closer out of the sun, it, it still, it still goes in the background. So I admit, I like the darker color a lot better than the bright white that was originally proposed. So we've already agreed on that. And then here's just a view standing inside. So look down on the patio surface. That's natural colored concrete. That's the color we're proposing for the wall. It's pretty dark.
Okay.
I mean, it's pretty nondescript. We'll have a slight contrast to the metal doors that we're proposing. So the preference is to have a slight distinguishment between, or distinguishing texture and color between the two materials.
So it won't be that stark?
No.
Okay.
Maybe not as stark as the running. We tried to make it more accurate. But this is, this is Friday afternoon, you know, standing out there, so
Well, and the picture's deceptive, too, because we're picking up the Tyvek writing on it, which is
Exactly, yeah.
Making it appear different than it will be.
I think the question that you're kind of getting at, Mr. Ford, is in most of the times when we have fences, we make them do screening, green screening, which you guys are saying, because it's on a driveway and it's all concrete, we can't have that natural barrier. So we're trying to figure out another way to do this. If this was a wall from the house, it does not need it. If this was part of the structure from the original design, then that wouldn't be before us today. But because it'd be considered an architectural fence, that's where we get into the technicalities here.
Totally understand.
So if we would have done this differently, I imagine, permitting
This fence is only screening the view from the street. We don't even turn the corner. We're not even, it doesn't contain a dog. It doesn't contain people.
Again, if we would have called this part of the addition and just made it up, there would have been a fence.
That was, that was the original application, and it was rejected.
So
It's defined as a fence.
Defined as a fence.
By ordinance alone.
And then fences here are normally screened. So that's where we're trying to get into this area.
And what we, and what we tried to do is use the colors such that it is natural-looking as opposed to being a striking contrast.
Any other questions from the board?
I just have a comment. I mean, I'm wondering if there's some evergreen screening that could be on that corner for the one neighbor that sees this. Otherwise, my observation is the difference between this photograph with the fence there. I actually think the fence, and at that height that you're requesting, actually mitigates how that structure stands out from some of the previous pictures. So I'm just wondering, you know, if we couldn't come to some understanding and get some screening on that corner from the one neighbor.
If, I believe that there are varieties
The owner's spent a lot of money on new plantings all along that western edge already. It's only been out there for six months, so, you know, it's going to continue to grow and fill and get taller.
But from their photos
Just the one picture he showed, I'm like, cut a well-placed pair of arbors right on that blunt edge of the fence. Not take care of that. Because I agree, from the road, I think this is in proportion with the house. I like the air and how it, you know, responds to Bloomfield Township and our openness. So it seems like
This perhaps shows it a little better, but if one looks right at, right where the corner is, you can see there is an evergreen. And it's before the fence line, is ahead of it. So they've done the best they, well, they could always plant, I guess, another one, but that would be six feet, five feet in front of this. So they have one right at the corner. And that is going to grow because it's new.
Because I understand we're not going to screen the whole thing, but
So here's my photograph. I think I was standing about five feet away from where the neighbor took his photograph. So you can see the minimal amount of the steel roof that pokes through. I mean, we've
And we're not even talking about the roof here. That
I think we'd have to plant trees.
Right, but you can't see the wall at all from that view.
Yeah, you can't see
So are those evergreens right here?
Yeah.
But, yeah, there's a, there's a lot of new evergreens.
I think I'm satisfied that it's screened to the extent that it could be, and I'm in support.
Yep. Make a motion, Carol.
With respect to the property located at 7403 Lindenmere Drive, I would move to approve the variance as requested for the wall and the gate exceeding four feet in height because the applicant has demonstrated practical difficulty. Compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be burdensome due to the topography of the property. of the property, particularly there's an extremely steep drop-off in the back and the property is heavily wooded. And in addition, the septic field is located in the, in the rear, and there's a lot of mature trees that you would not want to impact. There's no injustice to the adjoining neighbors. The proposal, again, to make the point, the structure itself, the pergola-type structure, is not before us. We're just talking about the gate and the, and the fence. And that, I believe, is compatible and actually minimizes any potential impact on the neighbors. The unique circumstances I've already described, and it's not self-created. If this is approved, all permits must be made within one year and all permits must be obtained prior to construction. The only thing I would add is I, I do believe you put the evergreens in and they're going to grow and that's going to be screened. If you could, I don't know how wide the wall is, but maybe during the summer, some little ivy plantings on the top of the wall that might cascade down just to break it up a little bit, if you can do that.
We will, we will consult the landscape architect about whether we can do that.
Madam Chair, we have support.
Okay, have a motion and support. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, next up, we have 3959 Shellmar Lane. Is the applicant here?
Personally, I think it looks like a train wreck, but I mean, we have no standing here. Exactly.
Hi, how are you guys? I'm James Shirley. I'm the, one of the property owners, along with my wife and two children, here at 3959 Shellmar Lane. And we'd originally submitted permitting for an addition that we were looking to add to our house. Couple of main reasons. Number one, my wife is an artist and finally started an art business with a gallery, and she's literally taken over my house. I mean, they're dry, I'm, I'm not kidding you, I have hardwood floors that have little drops of red paint randomly throughout the house. I finally have given in. I don't get angry anymore. I just kind of chuckle when I see them. So this whole thing kind of started with trying to give my, some more space to the house, give my wife an area to work. It coincides with my aunt, who's actually at my house right now, because I'm about to step out of town for a little bit, who takes care of my kids. I used to live in Traverse City. She lives up there. She's never married, aging, so we're going to, we wanted to put a bedroom in there for her in anticipation of the, when that unfortunate time comes that she has to leave her place in Traverse City. It kind of morphed into what I would see as the most important part of the addition, and that is the gym, right? I am not a basketball player. Well, I didn't grow up playing basketball. My son is a basketball player. He is five foot. He is 90 pounds. Is he going pro? No. Is he neuroatypical? Yes. My son suffers from OCD, ADHD, and a non-verbal learning disorder. And the one thing that gives my son joy, basketball. So in addition to the little spots of paint I see all over my floors, I hear a ball. 24, well, he sleeps. I hear a ball dribbling all the time. And it is his thing. He loves it. It is his go-to. It is his space that allows him to clear his mind, kind of get rid of those OCD thoughts, the anxiety, and just allows him to mellow out. He plays it all year round, outside in the winter. It's great. You, you can't see my hoop, but there's a hoop there. It's cooking now because my daughter backed into it. That's another issue. So when this, when this, when I was talking to Brian, who is the architect, that is like, I mean, I'm, I'm just, you're all going to be just like me, right? You do anything for your kids, right? And you're only as happy as your least happy kid, and it's your kid's joy that brings you joy. That's why I'm trying to have this approved. This is not for me. This is for my son. This is for my wife to paint and for my aging aunt. I've worked very, very hard to save for this. I didn't come into money. I've been waiting to do this project forever. I've been waiting to get him a little bit out of my house so I can actually sleep. And that's, that's where this project began. And I didn't, wasn't aware of any of this stuff. And I mean, I knew there was a view easement, because growing up in Traverse City, I was very sensitive to that with the neighbors and whatnot. But that's my spiel, and that's kind of what got us here today.
Any questions from the board?
Just for Andrea.
Yeah.
Sure. I don't understand what the permission request for an indoor court.
It's the accessory space, so I don't think that we have to, I don't, I think I agree with you. I don't think there's a permission request requirement. It's solely going to be for the dimensional overage and the lakefront average. We can only, the maximum we can hold it to is to 100. And the lakefront average came back, I think, at 95 feet. So he's asking for just a five-foot encroachment to that.
All right, because that did not make sense to me.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Then I'll open up for the public hearing. Anyone like to speak to this matter? Then I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the board for any discussion or a motion.
I will make one comment about the hardship, potential hardship we have here. We have a, along our north property line, and you notice it's kind of a pie-shaped lot.
I'm sorry, can we get a name?
Brian Howard, HF Architecture. We have a strange-shaped lot where the house currently sits, and which I renovated for him quite a, quite a few years ago. There's a 25-foot sanitary easement that runs along our north property line, which limits us, and that's why you see the shape you see, is because we brought our addition right up to that easement line. And you can see that on that site plan that shows kind of why it took on this kind of linear shape. And we, and again, we don't, we don't cross our line of sight from the house to the south of us and the house to the north of us. So the addition does not go past that. That's why I think this just becomes a dimensional variance. So, thank you.
Thank you. Bring it back to the board for a discussion or a motion.
I know you're looking at me. I don't have one last.
So is this a...
Just a dimensional variance.
Basketball-sized court. Is this a measurable dimension that this doesn't work if you lose that tendency?
Yes. Oh, sorry. It's a, it's a half-court basketball court.
It's not even...
Not even a half-court, actually. No, because it's...
It's like a three-point line.
Yes. And if you look at the one-floor plan, you can kind of see the arc of the three-point line, which he will be kind of right against the back wall when he shoots his three-point, So we, we, we were very limited in terms of what we could do there based on this 25-foot sanitary easement that we had to deal with. That's where the structure goes. You can see in the photo on the right.
No, I just got a question.
Got it. Thank you very much. And thank you for addressing it as a hardship as opposed to all of your practical difficulties.
Just, just curious, do we have a picture inside the sports court that, you know, just so to give us an, an opportunity to see, you know, like kind of like the three-point line?
The floor plan shows it. I don't have a 3D image to show that. If you go...
Which one is the sports court? Can you show? Which one? It's the yellow.
It's the big...
Yeah. It's the yellow.
I'm sorry, the, yeah, it's, sorry, it's the bigger yellow.
Yeah, so you should have or see it on, that'd be A101 if you have that. Or I can put it, we can do this.
There we go. I got it. I got it.
Madam, Madam Chair, if there's no more discussion, I'll make a motion. Madam Chair, with regard to the request for a dimensional variance at 39, no, I can read it up there, 3959 Shellmar Lane, I would move that the variance be approved as requested based on the information presented. The applicant has demonstrated all of the conditions for practical difficulty. Compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome. And in fact, even the small variance that they're adding is already unduly burdensome, but they're willing to go through that. I, I understand the necessity to make this, this home the way it needs to be. There's no injustice to the adjoining neighbors. It doesn't block lines of sight. We have no complaints from the neighbors regarding this, this project. Unique circumstances of the property have been given. We've got a lake. We've got an easement. We've got a weird-shaped lot, all of which, of course, is not self-created. So with that having been said, in the event the motion passes, applicant must make, must apply for all necessary permits within one year for the addition, and all permits must be obtained prior to construction.
I don't know if you need the next part. Single family affidavit? I'm not sure if you need that part.
There, there's no bathroom or anything?
No, I don't, I was just looking at that. I would agree. I don't think we need a single-family affidavit on this.
Support.
Do I have a motion and support? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Enjoy.
My birthday, thank you.
Yes, happy birthday. Happy birthday.
Thank you.
All right, next item, number one, 409 Wadsworth Lane. Oh, you're already there.
Good evening. My name's Ashley Fagley, and I'm going to be representing Mary Scalabassi for this petition. We are requesting a five-inch variance at the rear of the home and a 30-inch variance at the front of the home. The addition is going to be continuous with the existing home, matching the roof line and kind of lining up with the existing rear of the home right now. And the porch is going to be covered, and that's why we would like that 30-inch variance at the front of the home.
Inch variance.
Okay, any questions from the board? Then I'll open the public hearing. Anyone like to speak to this matter?
My name is Mike Smith from 3571 Brookshire, co-chairman of the Architectural Control Committee of Westchester Village. When we first received this application, there were some holes in the application that I needed answers to. And I called the homeowner up and talked to her, and she was very helpful. Got the information that I needed. And so then the Architectural Control Committee reviewed the plans and ended up approving it. We think it's going to be a great improvement in the subdivision. It's one of the ugliest homes in the subdivision. When you drive by, people laugh and sneer and point out, what is this? Because there, if you go back to the old Wild West where there were cowboys and Indians in forts with a lookout in the, in the fort, sticking up above the roof is like, what looks like a lookout tower with windows in it. And it's just a god-awful ugly thing. It's no practical purpose for it. So that's going to be gone. Plus, they are going to be doing a lot of internal renovations also. So the Architectural Control Committee did approve their plans.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak to this matter? Okay, then I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the board.
I have a quick question. The, the variance says one foot, but they mentioned five inches. What's the variance?
I think that, I think it was five foot, but we probably bumped it up to a foot.
Okay.
I think it was six inches. We, five inches, we...
I think that was...
Give a little bit of breathing room, I think. We gave him the foot.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions?
I'm ready to make a motion.
Sure.
All right. I would like to make a motion to approve the dimensional variance at 409 Wadsworth Lane for both the covered front porch and the master bedroom extension. Based on the information provided, the, the applicant did demonstrate all standards for practical difficulty, compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome, given that the existing condition of the house is already located that close to the lot line, and the fairly minimal one-foot request is no injustice to adjoining neighbors and unique circumstance of the property being that it's an existing condition and therefore not self-created. The same for the front porch. To have some covering at the front porch and some aesthetic improvements is worthwhile the practical difficulty. And again, no injustice to the neighbors evidenced by the homeowner association approval. If this motion's approved, all permits must be, must be pulled and within one year.
Support.
Do I have a motion and support? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations.
Thank you. I just wanted to point out too, on the agenda, it says S, it should be M. I'm not sure if the application was...
Thank you. So noted.
All right, thank you so much.
All right. Next item. This one is postponed. So we're moving on to 7119 Lindenmere Drive. Good evening.
Good evening. Hi, my name is Zachary Silverman, and I am the owner of 7119 Lindenmere. I'm requesting a variance, a seven-foot variance to build a shed. As you can see, there's a sports court there on the south side, and it's a, the shed's going to be built right along the neighbors' line, well, the adjoining neighbors' lot. Spoke to them. They're fine with it. The reason why we're building the shed in the first place is to put sports equipment and landscaping equipment. So it's pretty simple. The only thing I heard from a neighbor was that it's about 100 feet back from, from the street view, and so they just requested that we put a green screen in front of it, which is no problem. I already have my landscaper lined up for March and April, so that should be all set. And that's it. Yes.
So that, the, the depiction that you gave us, that's representative of what's going, it's going to look like? It'll be red with white trim?
Not going to be red, no. So that color is what the, it's tough sheds. They're in Royal Oak. I, I hired them, and that's the color that they stated. I may end up making it darker. A lot of the, the how, this is on Lindenmere, and as you, some of the other, our neighbor, they have like darker browns and stuff, and we actually do too, to match the roof and the door. There's some darker browns. I'm probably going to try to have it match that as long as they allow it.
Great.
And they have the color. Okay.
And it is be going in that area where the gravel is?
Where the gravel is, yeah. So I'll...
They have blockage and screenage to your other neighbor already because of those arbivites already there.
Yeah, that, that was already existing. Oh, that was existing when we bought the house a year and a half ago.
Is there a reason why it can't go in another position to meet the ordinance?
Yes, because the, the lot itself, it's about 28 acres behind, so you see that there's already an existing deck and a pool. Behind that, there's a pretty steep slope that goes back, so I couldn't put it there, and it would look pretty tacky if I did. So there really is no other place to put it, because I'm not going to put it in the front of the house. So that, that seemed to be the, the best place to put it.
Any other questions from the board? Then I'll open up the public hearing. Anyone like to speak to this matter? Then I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the board.
Madam Chair, with request to a permission, for a permission request and a dimensional variance at 7119 Lindenmere, I would move that the, practically, excuse me, I would move that the permission request be approved as requested based on the information presented. The applicant did demonstrate compliance with Section 42-7.6 standards, because the size and use of the accessory structure is in fact going to enhance the appearance of the property by being able to store otherwise open-air equipment. As far as the dimensional variance, I would move that it also be approved as requested based on the information presented. The applicant did demonstrate all of the standards for practical difficulty. Compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome. The back of the house is already pretty, pretty full, and with the topography to the rear makes a shed at the bottom of the ravine completely impractical. There's no injustice to the adjoining neighbors, and in fact, significant screening has already been put in place. Unique circumstances of the property have been demonstrated considering the topography, and this is not, certainly the topography is not self-created. With that having been said, application for all necessary permits must be made within one year for the storage shed, and all permits must be obtained prior to construction. What's the group feel about screening?
I think he said that they's putting in one more at the request of the neighbor.
Yeah, the, the addition of one more piece of evergreen screening so that... Yeah, the addition of one more piece of evergreen screening so that the site is mitigated from the neighbor is required.
Support.
Motion of support. All those in favor?
I wanna make sure that we're gonna be screening the front of this so you can't see from the front of the property, right? The screening will be required because it's already got it on one side. We're gonna make sure it's screened in the front, in the front yard, correct? Which he said he was gonna do anyways.
Well, it has to be screened. Yeah, he said he was gonna do it.
Perfect.
Okay.
We have a motion clarification and support. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Moving right along.
Alright, you're welcome. Next item, number four again was postponed, so we are at 4525 Lakeview Court. Is the applicant here?
Good evening. My name's Ellen Yurks. I'm with Antonelli Landscape. I'm gonna be representing Blake and Natalie Collo at 4525 Lakeview Court. We're seeking approval for an accessory to their backyard as a deck that is in the left bottom corner of what we're looking at in the house, being the white space of that deck and the pool addition to this home. To do that, the landscape wouldn't need to be removed and the elevation will need to be retained because of the, to gain level ground for a patio and a pool. This is going to become a thirty-six by eighteen-foot infinity edge pool where the water flows over into a trough and we have a thirteen-by-ten-foot spa that's raised on the back end and spills over into the main pool. This will result in the need for not just a retaining wall, but then a fence on top of that at four feet high to create a safety barrier. The deck is seventeen feet with a three-foot handrail on top, again for a safety rail. And we are proposing the two piers that are two by two by two, so like a cube shape that's adjacent to the pool edge on the pool coping. And then the fireballs will be located on top of that. And we're requesting for the four-foot-high pool equipment to be located behind their existing gazebo rather than immediately adjacent to the existing residence based on availability of space and running the mechanical plumbing lines for the pool. Happy to answer any questions regarding the installation of this pool project.
That's quite a project.
It is. You know what my favorite part about the project is? That the ongoing things that have happened, the homeowner bought this home and her dad, many, many years ago, who was involved in building sports courts, built the tennis court at this home for a customer of his. They ended up buying the house later on, so her dad built that sports court and they retilled it, but that's been a statement. And then I designed the gazebo several years ago that was erected to watch the tennis and now they've considered this pool to finalize their dream backyard.
Any questions from the board? Then I'll open up the public hearing. Anyone like to speak to this matter? Good evening.
Good evening. Brian Ritter, resident, 6800 Franklin Road, also the Restrictions Chair for Wing Lake Farms, Inc. And I've had the opportunity to review the drawings, the elevations and everything else while normally you would think an eight-foot wall would be, you know, a little high. The sloping backyard, the elevation of the existing sports court and everything else kinda permits. And it's already a space. They're just repurposing the upper-level space. And so after reviewing and everything else, we're not opposed to any of the things that they're looking at or what they're proposing. The only thing that we would ask is that, and while it's very mature on the backside of the property, there are two lots. It's an interesting shape because it seems to have like two side lots, a very minimal front and two angles on the back. So Indian Wood Trail is directly behind it, so you can see 6200 and, what is it, 6201? Something like that. Those two properties right there. The only concern would be that in the wintertime, it might be a little bit more exposed when the leaves are down and things like that. And the property to the, well, I'm gonna say to the north, is very extremely well-screened. That's all mature trees and everything else. The property on the south has minimal view at best. So, you know, possibly proposing a little bit more green screen along that line to enhance for those neighbors and create a little bit of privacy and quiet things down.
So along the western line there?
Yes.
Okay.
Along that western line. Just a little bit, you know, that things could, you know, grow. You know, we all know that mature, you know, mature trees pass away and they open up spaces. And so, you know, even if it were just some younger trees that would have the opportunity to grow to create future privacy, that would be the only recommendation that we would make. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak to this matter? Then I'll close the public hearing. If you'd like to make any comments?
We do appreciate the input on the screening. As long as the homeowner would be open to that, I certainly would advise to bring the screening in to block the western line there.
Any questions from the board? Then I'll bring it back to the board for motion.
I'll make a motion. As I understand, none of these are within the sixteen feet. None of them are dimensional variants. Oh, okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve the permission request at, where's my address? 4525 Lakeview in regard to the appeal for the accessory structures noted, the infinity pool and attached spa, the eight-foot retaining wall resulting from the grade changes and the four-foot fence on top, the thirty-six by eighteen-foot pool and the raised deck attached to the house in companion railings and the piers and fireballs. In addition, would approve the location of the pool equipment not immediately adjacent to the residence. It seems more practical behind the existing gazebo. Because the applicant did demonstrate compliance with Section 42-7.6 standards, the size of the accessory structures are all in scale with the existing neighborhood and the existing structures on the property. The use of all of these structures are very common in neighborhoods and appropriate to the size of the lot and is harmonious with the given neighborhood, given the landscaping they already have and some additional screening along the westerly property line as mentioned by the association so that it will not be objectional to any of the neighbors. Should this motion be approved, all necessary permits must be made and permits must be, and construction started within one year.
Support.
We need the dimensional variance too, for two of them.
Oh, there is a dimensional variance.
Yeah, for the wall, the retaining walls exceeding the four feet.
Well, on location of pool equipment and the equipment.
Okay, so I mentioned the location of the pool equipment, given it's practically best located behind that gazebo for the piping and whatnot as mentioned by the applicant. And the heights of the retaining walls as described are actually a function of the topography of the site and move to approve the variance for the height of that retaining wall.
And I'll support.
Do I have a motion of support? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Your board, I appreciate it. And I can explain why. There's a lot of screening between these two neighbors just so everyone can understand. This is a Spartan port and the one north is a U of M port.
Thank you so much.
Go right.
Fun tonight. Alright, so next up, item number six, 2930 West Hickory Grove.
My name's Michael Willoughby, architect for Dr. Nellamothu. I think the site plan pretty much shows everything. But we actually did get a variance for this in the year 2017. And he obviously went past his one-year ability to put it into action, but he's back. He's ready to go. And what you can see is that the house is not parallel to the side property line. And so he's gonna extend the garage a little less than ten feet to the north. And as he does that, he crosses over to the side yard setback for a whopping four inches by the time he gets to the north end. So that's it in a nutshell and there'll be an office above the garage.
Squeeze it in a little bit.
And of course, architecturally, it makes more sense to just continue the line rather than jog it or angle it or anything. So happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions from the board? Alright, well, I'll open the public hearing. Anyone like to speak to this matter? Please state your name and address.
Cheryl Cooper, 2825 West Hickory Grove Road, across the street. I don't have a problem with any of this construction. But what I do have a problem with is for the last at least twenty years, there has been continued construction on West Hickory Grove Road between Franklin and Square Lake. This really doesn't pertain to this group, but what you're not aware of is, for whatever reason, we aren't getting any of the safety paths through our neighborhood, through Club Drive, anywhere in Forest Lake Estates. We are not getting safety paths. With all of this continued construction during the summer mostly and then into the fall, you have, on top of construction vehicles out in the roads, you have the lawn crews. And because of all of the telegraph, et cetera, construction that has been going on year in and year out, Hickory Grove has become a major cut-through for everybody's convenience. A lot of people in this neighborhood walk. There is no safe place for any of us walkers, especially with the dogs, to go when people are not adhering to speed limits. And I have contacted the police. I've contacted, I talked to Danny Walsh last fall when the Square Lake construction thing came up. Nothing is getting done. We can't get police in there to monitor the speeds. It's just a very unsafe place for the rest of us residents. And sadly, this particular thing is what the straw that broke my back. And this sort of thing, I feel, because Hickory Grove Road isn't a huge road, it just needs to be taken into consideration when all of this construction is being approved. And then this time of year, when you've got snow on each side of the road, there's no place for us to die when somebody decides that they're gonna drive fifty going through the neighborhood. There's curves, there's hills. It's a very dangerous little chunk of road. And sadly, I'm right in the middle of it, three-tenths of a mile up to Franklin and about six-tenths of a mile up to Square Lake to where I can get to a sidewalk and feel that I'm reasonably safe. So I would like to ask, when you are approving all of these things, that you don't put them all in, on the road where all of the rest of us are trying to live and, you know, get out and exercise and try to do whatever in very unsafe conditions? Because I feel that I'm like risking my life every day just trying to walk the dog. And that's all I have to say, but since they're my neighbors, I felt that I could come in here and maybe enlighten all of you about this sort of thing. And I, like I said, I realize this isn't the right group to take this up with, but maybe if it's planted in there that you can...
Yeah, thank you for sharing that. Thank you.
I can make a motion.
Alright.
In regard to the...
Well, let me close the public hearing first. Anyone else like to speak before I close the public hearing? Okay, then I'll bring it back to the board.
Okay, in regard to the appeal at 2930 West Hickory Grove Road for the setback variance, I move the variance to be approved as requested based on the information presented. The applicant did demonstrate all the standards for practical difficulty because compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome because of the fact of the unique shape of the lot and that the property line is not parallel to the existing house. There's no injustice to the adjoining neighbors by reason that it would be consistent with other homes in the area and the orientation would match the existing house on the lot. Unique circumstances with the property have been demonstrated, given the fact that the property is skewed from the house. It's not parallel, which creates that small dimension on the side yard setback. And this is not self-created. Application for all necessary per, I'm sorry. If approved, the motion must include application for all necessary permits must be made within one year for the addition and all permits must be obtained prior to construction.
Support. I have a motion of support. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you very much.
Alright, next item, 2741 Turtle Lake Drive. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Kevin Hart. I'm at 405 South Eaton Street in Birmingham. I'm the architect for Colleen and Scott Henry. They are currently under construction adding on this, this is a covered kinda raised terrace area in the backyard. It is, the construction is all conforming to the setbacks to lot coverage. Distance to the water's edge, the average is two sixty-four and we're about four hundred and eighty-one feet from the, from the lake shore. The natural landscaping on both sides of the property is very well-screened. We have a kind of a low profile between these columns that you see. We have a kind of a low-profile aircraft cable type of fence that does provide some additional privacy and it's a kind of a low-profile jetted tub that we're planning to put in, just a whirlpool spa. And we have subdivision approval for the structure and be happy to answer any other questions you might have.
So it's just going on the deck?
Yes, it's, I'm sorry, it's going on the lower...
On the other side of the railing, there's gonna be a little bit of shrubbery and things like that.
Yes.
Okay.
It's on the lower level of this deck.
Very boring.
That was the one-second summary.
Any other questions from the board? I'll open the public hearing. Anyone like to speak to this matter? Then I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the board.
I'm ready to make a motion. If I'm not mistaken, this is just a permission request, correct? So in regard to the appeal at 2741 Turtle Lake Drive for the accessory structure, I move to approve, to request to approve as submitted. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate compliance with Section 42-7.6 standards because the accessory structure is appropriate to the neighborhood as a whirlpool spa and it is harmonious with the neighborhood, given that the neighborhood was approving this and clearly did not come here to object to it. If this, if this motion is approved, you have one year to complete all of your necessary permitting and as such, all screening must be done as well.
Support.
Do I have a motion in support? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Okay, item number eight, 2705 Turtle Shore Drive. Good evening.
Good evening, board members. Sean Gardello, 4248 Delamere Court, Royal Oak and Luda Rosier, Hugues Rosier Architects, Bloomfield Hills. This evening, we are proposing a small area of encroachment into the natural feature... This evening, we are proposing a small area of encroachment into the natural feature setback. Please note that we're offering an increased area of natural feature setback up in the, well, in this case, would be the right corner where we would plant Michigan native species that would be inspected by the ESD in compliance and preserved as a natural feature setback. This proposal was put together because in doing our due diligence on the property, we did soil tests throughout the property, and we did find in the northeasterly corner, which is actually the right-hand side of the map to the bottom, that there is unsuitable soil for construction in this area. And so, rather than the owner having to bear significant cost of reinforcement to this area and by way of pilings or helicopiers, we are designing small areas that are encroaching into a natural feature setback but then being offset in the area that is unsuitable for construction. I would note that this property is covered by 45% of wetland natural feature setbacks and the conservation easement. So, we are trying to work with a property, as you can see in the map here, that is significantly natural, and certainly we want to maintain that, and yet be able to construct a home in this area. We do have the support of David Johnson and the HOA, and have letters on file of that, and we also have support of our neighbor to the west. And I will turn it over to Mr. DeRosier.
Thank you. Lou DeRosier, architect. Yes, this is interesting. There is a site plan that shows the neighbor's house also. By coincidence, and a good thing, that we're the architects for the neighbor's house also that has approved this concept, and of course, Mr. Johnson also has. But the biggest thing here is, if you could go to the site plan you did have, I guess that'll work for today's meeting. You know, as we have a really tough practical difficulty, if you could see the drawing with the, and I could pass it around, I have it with the neighbor, his property is, his house is, he has full frontage on the lake, and of course, we have lost about 45% of this lot from the, I should turn this thing this way, from the wetlands area. But the important thing is that we are not touching the wetlands anywhere. We are just slightly in, 13% of our building is in the, not of the building, we use 13% of the wetlands area is what we're taking up, and then we're replacing it, mitigating it over on the far right over there. You know, I would have to say, if I were, if any of you were my clients, I think I might be up here for you, because this is a very tough practical difficulty. And when you're on the lake, everything is about view, view, you know, and so you want every room to try to have a view of the lake. So, I think it's important to know that we're in the area, we're very, we're going to be very cautious, we're not changing any of the grades in the area where the natural area is, and we're going to leave everything exactly the way it is and not touch the, and whatever's disturbed, we're going to put back the way it was. So, we certainly would hope you would work with us on this, for it's a very exciting project. And we've all worked very hard on it.
Yeah, these are, these are the ones that are difficult for me. I understand what you're trying to do, but, and I appreciate that you're going to restore in a different area that really isn't adjacent to the water. But really, the difficulty is that the house is bigger than the lot. And, well, you could build a smaller house without requiring any setbacks, true? I mean, you gotta be honest, this is why I struggle with these things.
It would be extremely small. Could I, could I pass around, or can you put a document up there?
How many square feet?
That shows both the houses next to each other?
How many square feet is this house?
It's 6,000 on the main level.
Okay.
And the house next to it is 5,100 on the main level. You're able to put that up there? Can we smooth it out? Oh, I see.
So, Carol, I also have some concerns. Well, I guess I'll give him a minute.
So, just bear with us, we appreciate you working with us here. So, that shows both the homes next to each other. Can we, can we go a little higher, higher? There, perfect. And you can see they're both very similar in size, and you can see how our building has been cut, pushed back significantly to try to still but enjoy the view there. So, we're being very timid and cautious with this area. It's just critical to be able to utilize it if you're on the lake finding, oh, the other thing I forgot to say, does this go even higher? To the, this neighbor here is on the west, and he's the one, he also has no problem with this, but on the east, you can't, you can't see any other houses. There's no houses for hundreds of yards. So, that's a good thing, and so you're looking into the treat area. So, we've, this is important.
Do you have a question for the board?
Mr. DeRosier, is there a reason why we can't shift the house more to the left, closer to the street, so it's not encroaching?
Oh, well, I'm glad you said that. We can't, the setbacks in this development, you can only get so close to the side yards there.
So, in terms of, you're saying that we can't get any closer to the street?
Oh.
So, the, as I had mentioned in my little introduction, I'm sorry, is, you know, I did test the soil with McDowell and Associates on this entire site, and, you know, ironically, because of the conservation easement and all the wetlands that are over on this far side of the site, what you can't see is the bad soil content that's underneath basically the northeasterly section of this property. So, if we shift the house further towards the street, the soil actually gets worse.
Oh, okay.
And that was, that was, that's really the whole reason that...
It precludes the ability to even build the house.
I'm sorry?
It precludes the ability to even build the house.
Yes, that's correct. Yes.
And that not precludes, it makes it cost prohibitive.
It's more costly to deal with.
Because of pylons, engineered...
Or remediate, remediate.
Yes, yeah, that is correct.
Yeah, that was my question as well. There seems to be a clear spot, I don't know, for really going on hardships, whether we need to see those soil tests or whatever, but that, you know, that big, large, flat, more flat area, if you shifted the house back towards the street, understand, you probably want lake views, but I'm also going to observe that that neighbor that you're talking about, the wetlands don't cut on an angle through there. He's not in his wetlands, I'm pretty sure.
That's correct.
Because of the, yeah, the shape of the wetlands.
But certainly, I mean, one of the natural reactions is, let's move it towards the street, but after soil tests were done, it's, it's almost a major, major foundational project at that point.
I'm channeling the woman who used to sit in this seat about protecting our wetlands and properties adjacent to the lake, and so it could cost you more, but it preserves the lakeside.
I forgot to say that the Wangs apologize for not being here, the Wong's, I'm sorry, are, they're in China, but coming back soon.
Any other questions?
Do we have to open until the comment? Do we have that yet?
No, we haven't yet. I'm going to open the public hearing then. Does anyone like to speak to this matter? And I'll close the public hearing and bring it back if there's any other discussion or comments.
So, I, from my perspective, I do understand the practical difficulty associated with, it is a platted lot, it was designed that way. So, depending on how long that lot's been there, the encroachment associated with some of that natural features could have eroded that lot away more. Was it always that 45% taken up, or has it over time been moved on to the lot?
I did go back and look at aerial photos, and it has increased, but, you know, that wasn't our concern.
What is increased?
The wetlands and natural feature setback.
Okay.
It has increased, I mean, I looked at basically, what is it, 50 years of photographs, that's about how far we can go back right now, but that wasn't the concern. The concern was the whole northeasterly corner, which is the right-hand side of your map at the, at the top, basically is where McDowell was found, that, you know, basically we're, in some areas, 500 pounds, which is really, really bad. I mean, you're talking basically Pete and Maro.
I've used McDowell and Associates for some of my stuff. They're a reputable company. I would trust their word.
But I have, just to the record, I have met with the building department and ESD with all these things, so...
I can, I can appreciate and understand that. If they already tried to move it and they can't, that is significantly below levels in which you want to build a home.
It's a tough one. Are they ready to make a motion?
I believe there's a reason why they kicked it down. The problem with a smaller house is that it actually does a disservice to the neighborhood.
Sure.
The size of the house is compatible.
The size of the house is compatible. The unfortunate thing is the lot isn't conducive.
It's the lot that's the difficulty.
Right, that's, not every piece of property is builtable, per se. I mean, with what you want to build.
True.
That's true. That's very true.
But to put in a, to put up a smaller house...
And I think...
Would actually be a disservice to the entire...
But I think this neighborhood has minimums.
Four thousand square feet in there is, is like a garage.
Do you know if the neighborhood has, I believe it's HOA minimums.
I believe at 4,500 square feet is a minimum.
Is the minimum first floor, correct?
What's that?
First floor total.
First floor.
Well, if you lost, if you lost 1,500 on your ground floor, could you push it out? You know, that's, that's the problem.
We appreciate it. Clients have a family and certain requirements, it's the same, similar, very similar size to the house next door, and all those homes along that area, in fact, I've done a few of them, and it's just, it's the best and perfect way to place a house on that property. You have to work with us on that a little bit. And it is a very difficult, was a very difficult, practical difficulty, if you will.
Madam Chair, I'm going to take a stab, we'll see if we make it through. With regard to the request for dimensional variance at 2705 Turtle Shores Drive, I'm going to move that the dimensional variance be approved as requested. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all of the standards for practical difficulty. Compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome because it would significantly either decrease the size of the home, which would impact the surrounding neighbors in a negative way, or would increase significantly the cost to build. There is no injustice to the adjoining neighbors, and in fact, this home remains similar to the other homes in this exceptional community within the township. Unique circumstances of the property have been demonstrated, given that it does not actually go into the natural feature, which is the lake, and frankly, as I look at the map, it's a long distance from the real water. The rest of that is marshy at best, it appears. And I would argue that the topography and the buildable nature of the land and the requirements for home and size all are not self-created. With that having been said, application for, if this is approved, application for all necessary permits must be made within one year for the natural feature setback encroachment.
Support.
I have motion support. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Roll call? Meads?
Negative.
Kolinsky?
Yes.
Ford?
Negative.
Rosati?
No.
Gia Grande?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
And Gittelman?
Yes.
So, motion carries four to three.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Appreciate it, Dan.
Appreciate your time.
Okay, oops. 3160 Berkshire Drive. Look at you, you disappeared. Good evening.
My name is Angela Denton. This is my husband, Troy Denton. We reside at 3160 Berkshire Drive. We are seeking an approval for the existing 25-by-40-foot sports court that's encroaching five feet onto the westerly side yard and five feet from the rear setback with a netting that's up to 10 feet high, on actually just two sides, on the north and the west side. It's six feet tall on the west and the south side, or the east and the south side, and also that it is located in the side and the rear yards.
Any questions from the board? Then I'll open up the public hearing. Anyone like to speak?
My name is Mike Smith from 3571 Berkshire Drive, co-chairman, along with Chuck, of the Architecture Control Committee of Westchester Village. This project was brought to our attention by someone in the neighborhood who called, complaining and inquiring about this project. That is how we first found out about this project. They did not come to the homeowners' association and ask for an application or approval or anything, they just went ahead and did it. So, the first thing we heard was from somebody in the neighborhood who was inquiring and complaining about what they did. And it was sometime after that, that we did get an application. That was after the fact, but there were problems, and I'll have Chuck sort of go into that because he was doing some follow-up.
Hi, Chuck Sally, 376 Westborne Drive in Bloomfield. I'm co-chair with Mike for the homeowners' association, and we attempted multiple times to get information from the homeowners about the development that is already done, and as Mike said, we only became aware of it as a result of a complaint from a neighbor. We don't have enough information in hindsight to approve it, and it looks like it violates number of our guidelines and a number of the township guidelines, and so we're wondering, you know, how this happened. You know, it doesn't appear that there were any building permits issued for this particular project. It certainly didn't become before this board or before any review committee prior to its completion, and so we're disappointed in that particular aspect of the pleading. And I think the challenge here for us is that what the homeowner is describing as a screen is actually a chain link fence. And so, a chain link fence at 10 feet is neither approvable by the township or appropriate with our guidelines. So, we're, I think that the issue for us, other than the fact that it's a tardy submission, is the fact that they put up a fence that is not particularly well-received by the neighborhood.
So, I want to add that the homeowners' association, Architectural Control Committee, cannot approve this project based upon the fact that they're asking for approval after the fact. And number two, when we were inquiring and trying to get additional information, after we did finally get an application, they were reluctant to get back in touch with us and provide the additional information that we were requesting. Therefore, the homeowners' association does not approve the project.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Hi, good evening.
Hi, Christian Serritos, I live, my family lives across the street from the Dentons, and we've gotten to...
Address?
3163 Berkshire.
Thank you.
We've gotten to know them since they moved here, they came from Texas. Just great people, and were a nice addition to the neighborhood. And I think it's, this might be more a, kind of a simple mistake that they didn't know they needed a permit for this kind of thing. of a simple mistake that they didn't know they needed a permit for this kind of thing. That's my take. But I would say that we don't really see it from, I don't see it at all, like from our house. If I look out the kitchen window and that's looking at them, and I don't hear anything from it, so I don't think it really does anything negative to the neighborhood. And I'm not sure who would complain because I think no one has a problem with it. But that's, that's my take.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak to this matter? Okay, then I'll close the public hearing. And if you'd like to address any comments that were made?
Yeah, I mean, I'd say we built this for our kids, obviously. We have a nine and 10-year-old and just getting them outside. And we might not have gone about it right, and I'm sorry for that. And I mean, we just didn't know, but we're not trying to cause trouble. I'm willing to do what I need to put bigger trees. But I mean, I mean, what would you say?
It's used every day as we homeschool our kids. It's one of the resources they have to get out and be active. We have a hockey player who roller blades on it every single day. And, and our apology is to the homeowners association as well. When we moved in 13 months ago, I have, did not look into guidelines, and that's our fault.
And have never heard from them also, like they, at all.
Correct. So as a, giving them an application, I have responded to almost every email that needed information for them and have supplied that. And so I haven't, I don't quite understand that they've said that they've reached out without any kind of response. So I haven't, I haven't heard.
We also went to every single neighbor surrounding us who we've talked to, and they've, they're all in support. And so it's, I don't know where they live or who complained or what. But I mean, I hope my kids have a memory of having fun in the neighborhood, being outside. The neighbor girls come over all the time. Other kids do. And it's, it's just, you know, that's all we're trying to make. But I'm willing to do what I need to do to make it, make them happy. I mean, I'm not trying to cause trouble.
The, the fence, the netting that we keep calling it is, is that. It's just netting. It's not chain link fence.
I wanted to ask you about that.
Yep. And so, and really, again-
The black netting, it can be taken up and down.
It can. And so my son's a hockey player. And so really, some of the reason was is our neighbor had a dog that was out. We don't want pucks flying to a neighbor's yard as well. We're more than welcome to, or happy to green screen it even better. So that, that can be part of the-
I already did, I mean, in, I guess, June, did a lot of trees, but I'm willing to do more. Like, I just didn't think someone would care in the back. Because you can't even see it from the front unless you sit there and analyze it. Like, if you stop and on my driveway and stare for a long time, you might be able to see the post. And that's before the trees have had time to grow even more. And I didn't buy cheap trees, so, but I'm willing to do more.
What, what have we been doing with the height of the netting?
10 feet. Not a bit much.
It's usually six. That's what I thought.
And it's only 10 feet on the neighbor's side and the backside, which I'm, I don't, directionally, the rest are, are lower.
Yeah. So just the north and the west side where neighbors' yards would be-
So basketball doesn't go in my neighbor's yard, which he's supportive. I talked to him.
Yeah. And there was letters attached with our application as well.
We received those letters.
Excellent.
Yes.
But you could reduce the height of that.
Yes, yeah.
All right.
Yeah, I think on the larger properties, sometimes the-
Well, that's one of the other issues. This, I mean, putting, putting a sports court like this on a 200-foot deep property that's substantially wider is, is one thing. Putting it on a standard lot in Westchester Village is, is another.
The 10 feet's a lot.
I was actually surprised when I saw this, that they were actually able to get one in there, because I'm familiar with the property.
Well, it kind of fits, like in special way, kind of.
So, yeah. Yeah, I, yeah. Anyway, I drive by that house all the time.
Well, I'll, I'll just give you a little hint here, you know, coming from Texas, because I know things are different in Texas. My sister lives there.
We're finding out real fast.
I've never done something like this in my life.
You guys don't really have a lot of that stuff.
Well, we all have eight-foot tall wood fences you don't see behind it.
We're not messing with Texas either.
And we apologize that we weren't aware of what we were doing.
Just future reference. Anytime you want to do anything in your yard, come over the township first, okay?
Yes, thank you.
So, well, from my perspective, I don't really have a problem with the sports court. I'd like to bring the net down to six feet. I don't know what other people's thoughts are.
Increase the screening with the trees.
And increase the screening where, where it's needed.
Yeah, that other picture there was quite a bit.
Can I show you one thing on the, the street side view?
The one side looks-
So, see those trees? I mean, I guess, so that's only six foot tall right there, and you can't see it. So that's the only place. And then our neighbor is the one that can see the 10-foot side. That's so nothing goes in his yard, which he, I talked, I mean, talk all the time and hang out. Like, it doesn't, he doesn't care. And then behind, that's 10 feet. So done. But I'll make it all six feet. I don't, that's fine if y'all want that. And then that side right there on our yard is 10 feet. And then it drops down to six feet on the rest.
Right. We just-
Which is fine. I have no problem with that. Do that.
Will it provide you with, I mean, you sound like-
Yeah, it'll still stop. It's fine. They'll go over. But honestly, as through this process, I've got to know all the neighbors. So I feel comfortable going in their yard, picking up the pucks. I don't, I don't care the height, because I'll, yeah, I'll drop it six feet. I'll get that done right away.
Any other questions, discussion?
As long as we get different, those are, everybody's don't seem to be adequate.
Oh, the ones in that picture? No, that, I don't know.
The trees in the run are great.
Correct. In, in these type, these months, it isn't-
I planted those ones.
Yeah, it was in the summer when the foliage even further back in the kind of drainage area was fuller. And so we were covering the bottom. And so we will go back and fill in more.
That part looks good right there.
Looks great.
And I'd love to have it where you can-
You should know, our ordinance does require screening of air conditioners and all those things to the height of the item at the time of installation.
No, that's fine.
So if you have a six-foot high fence, we're expecting at least a six-foot high or bigger.
So you don't want a 10-foot high fence?
I'll put the same tree there.
Cost of those trees is huge.
All right, I'm ready. Anybody ready? I'm ready.
We don't want you to run back to Texas. No, we love having you here.
Well, we're having a good time here.
Yes, good.
With the weather?
My kids are having a good time with that.
All right, good.
All right. With respect to property located at 3160 Berkshire Drive, I would first start with the permission request and move to approve that for the existing sports court and netting because the applicant has demonstrated compliance with section 42, there's 7.6 standards. The use and size of the structure and location is compatible and harmonious with the neighborhood. It's not objectionable due to any noise, fumes, et cetera. I would also move to grant the dimensional variance for the netting, but I'm going to limit the height of the fence, the entire fence to six feet and encroaching in the rear inside yard setbacks. I grant that variance too. You have demonstrated practical difficulty. Compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be burdensome, and there's no injustice to the neighbors by reason of the fact that the netting and the sports court is going to be totally screened with evergreens. And, and in addition, quite frankly, the majority of the neighborhood has approved of it and find it not objectionable, and it's not self-created. Now, if this is approved, application for all necessary permits must be made within five business days for the existing sports court and netting. You're going to have to reduce the height of the 10-foot down to the six feet. Additional evergreen plantings will be required to screen from public view, and they're supposed to be the height of the fence.
Correct.
Okay. No illumination is permitted on the sports court, and use of the sports court is limited to daytime hours.
Correct.
Support. I have motion of support. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations.
Thank you.
Welcome to Michigan.
All right. Last, not least. I believe it's the last one.
Too many people for only one to go.
Yes, the sign. Signs are always last. So fans.
Feel like the Price is Right winner, but I don't know. I didn't hear any of the music. That's okay. Mike Stevens, I'm with Sinorama and Troy, representing the, the client here. Our address is 5875 New King Court in Troy. So we are proposing a double-sided, illuminated ground sign in conjunction with the wall sign, which has already made its way through the permit process. We are seeking the variance here today to have the ground sign at a size of 29 square feet overall, 48 inches above grade, 88 inches left to right. This will be a double-sided unit to have expandability for future tenants to come into the medical facility. As we kind of just flipped through a couple steps back, we do have a wall sign that has, again, already made its way through permits, reading Landmark Surgery Center. So the plan for this building is to be, you know, multipurpose, not just for Landmark Surgery Center, but future tenants as well, up to five, I believe, as it currently shows on the represented monument sign out front. There was an existing sign, which I believe is on one of the pages in the rendering as well, which is, yep, currently still there, at least the framework. So the framework, we didn't want to touch. We didn't want to do anything with it. We'd like to utilize the pole structure that's there to help the, help the client with some costs. So that's been up there, open, exposed to the elements for quite some time, since I've started on this project about six months ago with, with the clients. And that's the new look as it stands.
Henry, what was recommended by the design review board? I couldn't, it wasn't clear to me.
Well, interesting. The conversation with the design review board was interesting. There was, the applicant, there was a lot of discussion revolving what the desired end result would be. And at the end of the day, the design review board approved the wall sign, and the applicant understood that they would have to proceed to the ZBA for the ground sign. But now that we're in this position, they have the wall sign. It's really, in the 01 office district, they are allowed to have one, two signs. The wall sign cannot exceed 10% when you've got a ground sign. So that's what we're asking, is that not only two, two signs, but also to exceed the 10 square feet.
So without the ground sign, the wall sign would be fine?
Correct. So there was a lot of discussion. But ultimately, my impression was that the board was going to send that to the zoning board to make a determination.
Well, I guess it's a good thing you didn't tear down the old one, because now we're here dealing with this. So the plan is that the building will be identified by Landmark Surgery Center. That correct?
Yes.
Kind of the name of the building, then you'll have other tenants.
Shahar Khan. So, you know, there are a lot of patients that come to executive plastic surgery. So if they see the sign landmark, they're not going to necessarily stop. The other thing is, if you see that tree that gets in the way of the sign. So if you pass that tree, you've already passed the building because you're going at a good speed. So it would only make sense to put the executive ground sign so that they can know that it is coming up and it would be legible, especially when you're passing by the sign on Woodward with the tree and the speed. So that will really help the patients, because I have had a lot of patients now who have passed the building and then they turned around, and so it was an inconvenience.
Maybe you should have just named the building, just with the name, and then you-
It's also a safety issue. I've-
Yeah. I mean, I understand the, you know, the ground sign, but I'm just curious why you picked one tenant for the wall sign.
No, I think there's room for other tenants.
Yeah, there's five tenants that go on the ground sign, one on the building.
Right.
Right. The only one would be landmark on the building, so.
So up on the second floor, we have like a full surgery center, a certified surgery center. And that's where, essentially, that's like the half of the building, if you will. But the other half, you know, there's a lot of potential as far as a med spa slash executive plastic surgery, possible plastic surgery, urgent care. So there is a potential to expand. But we want to be able to let whoever's coming know that, you know, don't pass by us. We are a multifaceted practice.
Well, yeah, I guess there's no way to get them to come in with the whole plan at once, like we kind of got backed into this, or by approving the one.
How much does the wall sign exceed the required space?
42 square feet.
The desire and intention of the applicant is to proceed with the proposal as presented.
It's 42 versus 10.
I guess, I don't have an issue with this, really. But what, I guess my thing is, why didn't you just name it like Bloomfield Medical Center? And then all the tenants would be on this, you know what I'm saying? It's kind of confusing to me that it says, because what you'll be saying if you're another tenant is say, I'm Joe Blow, but look for Landmark Surgery Center building, you know? So that's just a comment. I don't tell you what to do.
I'm executive, I'm executive plastic surgery, but look for the Landmark Surgery Center.
Yeah. I just think that's kind of odd, but I don't have a problem with it if that's what you want to do, so.
It's not a good pick.
Can I speak? I'm sorry.
Sure.
My name's Lori Rigero. I'm the manager for Dr., thank you, for Dr. Khan's office. So when we were here last time, one of the reasons why we couldn't make the sign any smaller is because the name of the company was long. So to create, to make the sign smaller, the board had said visually that it would be hard to read that. So that's one of the reasons why they allowed us for the longer or larger sign on the building. Also, the numbers that are next to the sign to the left are not illuminated. They're actually painted on the building. So that was another reason that they gave us the exception of the longer and larger sign to be seen coming both ways down Woodward. And then the reason why we didn't name it as one building is we were in a different location previously and moved here just about a year ago. And our entities are separate. They're completely different companies. And those names were already previously to what we had moved in. So when we started the reconstruction of the building, we came in as executive plastic surgery, but decided to put this name on the building because 95% of our patients are from out of state and out of country and coming for surgery. So that was a larger landmark name versus the medical office itself.
Okay. Now I know why she's the manager.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much.
You just earned a raise.
Yes.
Boom.
Okay, she connected all the dots.
Well, I'm going to agree with the design review. I don't think the Landmark Surgery Center could have been any smaller on that building. Already the numbers are bigger.
Inch high, yeah.
Especially on Woodward. So you need to be able to see it while you're going.
And with the trees. Because you want to make sure the trees are there, right? That's important.
Because I'm one of those people who are driving all the time, and I'm like, where is it? Where, you know?
Thanks for doing business in the township, too. Appreciate it.
Yep, we appreciate it.
What's really dangerous, if somebody misses you, is then they're trying to cut across four lanes to do what Michigan left, and it's-
Or they're slowing down to 10 miles an hour, trying to make sure they don't miss it, yeah.
That may be me, but.
I'm ready to make a motion unless, so, for the dimensional variance in regards to the appeal at 43940 Woodward Avenue, for the, seeking the approval of the 25 by two-foot wall sign exceeding the permitted size of 10 square feet for Landmark Surgery Center, in addition to the eight-foot wide by four-foot tall multi-tenant ground sign, I moved the variance be approved as requested. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all the standards for practical difficulty because, in compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance, would be unduly burdensome because you won't be able to see it. It would be unsafe for people, as well as there's no injustice to your neighbors because we want them to be able to come to your building. And now your neighbors are complaining about your sign blocking theirs or anything like that. Unique circumstances of the property is the fact that the long name of the sign and the long name of the company is the reason why we have this variance. It is not self-created due to you not able to see it from the road. With that, if approved, within one year, you have to get all your building permits. And I look for any support.
I have a motion of support. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations. Good job.
Congratulations. Thank you. Thanks for doing business in the township.
Absolutely. Appreciate it.
We'll have an open house soon, so please come and join us.
Can we get a little free nip and tuck?
The women are-
Yeah, we'll be there.
Thank you. All right. So the next board meeting is March 11, 2025. And I put a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved? Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.